To order the Monday, August 30th, 2021, regular Beacon City School District School Board Meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kelly Rolclaw, please. Excused.
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. Matt, can you review the exit, please?
Exit's in the back of the LTI.
Okay, we're gonna start with open to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public statement?
I would like to.
Okay, come on up. Just so you know, I don't know if you've spoken here before, but there's a four-minute limit.
Okay, four minutes. Okay, I will try to speak quickly.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
All right. Here we go.
And if you could state your name.
Sure. Okay, so hello to all board members. My name is Joy Vino, and I am a special education teacher in the district for 16 years now. I've worked at all four elementary schools in numerous capacities, and I love this district and the community. But I need to speak up because things have begun to get out of hand rather than getting better. We've been through a year-plus from you-know-where, and just when we thought that things were getting better, they've taken a turn for the worse. What I'm talking about is the mandates, the unlawful ones. Although the state of emergency ended on June 23rd in New York, there continue to be overreach on mandates from our state executive, with the last one being that vaccines will be mandated for teachers and staff or face weekly testing. But I ask you, where will this end? Will it next be mandatory to vaccinate your children? Will we be able to buy and sell and live a normal life ever again? The truth is that the virus is here to stay and cannot be eradicated. It can be delayed, or people can build up natural immunity. However, the rate of survival for most classes of people is upwards of 99%, with children being the least vulnerable, excuse me, and the most unlikely to spread it. This district has taken many steps to mitigate the spread, and the hard work is greatly appreciated. I have voiced my support for this district more than once to be among, first, to open up in person last September, to roll with the punches, to make decisions, and to keep all informed. We now have one year-plus of experience under our belt, and it's time that we look at how we have done in this community. How many fatalities have there been in our school community? It's time we look at the data and weigh it against the measures we need to take this year. This is where it comes to the vaccines. This is a medical decision that should in no way be forced onto people, especially not with threats attached. That is no way to build trust. And now let's talk about the effectiveness of the vaccines. It depends on what you are looking for them to do. Vaccines have never been meant to prevent transmission, but to build and enhance our natural God-given immune systems so that they can fight and win against diseases and strains. And they use our immune systems to work. Therefore, one needs to be infected in order for it to work. In addition, look at any research, and you'll find that natural immunity is superior to any vaccine, yet people are not able to show their "I've had COVID" cards. No, they must undergo an invasive and investigational medical treatment just because the government says so. What? Since when does the government know what's best for you or your children? I don't even trust someone to fix or maintain something at my home without my direct oversight. No one takes care of you better than you, and no one takes care of me better than me. It's a fact. This brings me to my last point. The CDC director herself stated that the vaccines don't prevent transmission. So this is not a matter of public health. This is not a matter of us protecting others and being selfless so we don't kill our neighbors. That is a lie. I will say it again. COVID vaccines do not prevent transmission. So why in the world would we force others or our own children to take them? There are plenty of things that are tested and tried, including the Mergon HEPA filters that have been placed throughout our buildings, and the proper hygiene that needs to be taught and reinforced in our schools. Now, just to get back to teaching for a moment, we've learned that good instruction involves differentiation in groups of students and to individuals. However, right now, we are faced with a one-size-fits-all mandate that just plain doesn't work. Let's question what will work for our district, our people, and our children, rather than
about the social-emotional, and then the capital project, all sort of in one?
taking someone else's word for it.
That's fine.
Okay.
I plan to follow this up with an email to all of you detailing the evidence for my statements.
Maybe we don't need our new business.
I've got like four presentations this week, and I goofed on that a little bit.
I do not claim that I have made no errors, but you are free to see for yourself.
They're all related, so.
So just briefly, before we begin on this, I just wanted to just talk for a minute
Thank you for this opportunity to speak and for all that you do for the Beacon City School District.
Thank you so much for sharing your thoughts.
about our opening efforts.
You're welcome.
So on Friday, the governor, not the governor, but the New York Department of Health did
Is there anyone else that has public comment? Is there anyone on Zoom?
No.
make a brief announcement about a universal mask mandate for staff and students in all
Okay, we have two workshops tonight, both from Matt and Edel.
schools in the state of New York.
Matt, do you want to start with the social-emotional piece?
There was a lot of kind of inside, not inside, but we get communications then from our professional organizations. I received communications from NISCUS, which is the State Superintendent Association, and also NISBA, which is the New York State School Boards Association. Essentially, what both of those communications said is, what both of those communications said is that, is that there'll be some more state guidance coming. We were thinking it might come today or tomorrow. I don't expect it to be anything earth-shattering. I think it might just possibly clarify small parts of all of this. But over the past few days, I have received a lot of different questions about things like, you know, questions that get a little bit more specific about the wearing of masks, mask breaks, is there a code of conduct for mask-wearing, is there a vaccination requirement? For mostly, the questions are centered around staff. So we met today as administrative team, just to kind of come together just a little bit. Once again, we meet on a very regular basis about opening efforts. And so I thought it would be best just to do one more communication probably Wednesday night. I know we have the board retreats, so I was gonna do it before. That we do, I'll send out an email with some slides and do kind of a shorter town hall to answer people's questions. But we want to try to be just as clear and open as we can. Also, I've received some questions just about the remote option for students with medical issues. So maybe go, not maybe, we'll go a little bit more in-depth on that. For people who can't watch the town hall, we'll make sure the information gets out concurrently so you can read it and not have to pop on Zoom to hear more about it. So we are prepared and excited to do that. And like I said, today, an email to the community, we don't expect anything from the governor to really radically alter what we have planned. We've been planning for a full reopening really since June, and I get that there's a lot of anxiety about the opening of school, and so we'll do more communicating to at least try to be more clear with what we're trying to do. So, and also just in regards to the public comment, one of the things that I've said several times in the town halls that I do and also other communications is that I think that this is, I guess, my opinion, but it's an opinion shared, I think, by probably most districts in New York, is that if there is a vaccine mandate, that it would come from the governor's level. I think from what I'm understanding, it needs to be legislation that's passed, so it can't just be the governor. It'd need to come through the New York State Legislature. Otherwise, each individual district is trying to negotiate this at just a lot of complexity, and it would be clear if it came from the state. And also, if it did come from the state, my understanding would be for folks who are unvaccinated, there would instead be a testing requirement. I've said numerous times that I'm a proponent of vaccines. I understand for parents, at this time, it's a personal choice, and I don't think I'll ever be in the position to mandate a vaccine for children. That's someone else's job. But I do support the governor's efforts if she indeed goes in this direction and the New York State Legislature to have a mandate for employees. Again, I think they would probably have the testing option for folks. All right, so just quickly, just, I won't spend a ton of time on this, but a few years ago, a group of stakeholders from all aspects of our district came up with a mission, vision, belief statements about the district, and then what we wanted to see in our graduates. There's our mission statement, our belief statements here, diversity of the community is our strength, we believe in providing equitable education for all students, and in developing and implementing a culture of care for everyone in the district. We worked quite a long time on developing these skills and abilities for, these are skills and abilities that we want to see our graduates possess. I think one of my main reflections, I've shared this numerous times, that the past year and a half has, I think, proven, if we needed proof, the past year and a half has proven how important these skills and abilities are in navigating this increasingly complex world of ours. And so we really want to be designing and implementing learning experiences that help students build these skills and abilities. And then we have these attributes and dispositions, and this follows a little bit more in the social-emotional realm, that we also want to see in our graduates, empathy, self-regulation, citizenship, curiosity and wonder, and adaptability and flexibility. And quite honestly, I think you could also make an equally strong argument that over the past year and a half, these six things are, or five things are needed in great amounts as well in this world of ours. And so this is more on the social-emotional realm of what we do in the district. All right, so tonight, I wanted to just talk about the board goals a little bit, and then our plan is that the meeting, I think we're targeting the end-of-September meeting, is to be much more specific about the action steps we're taking and also have some measurables and sort of checkpoints for this year in terms of moving these goals forward. But tonight, I just want to provide an overview of what we're thinking. So the excellence goal, the excellence goal, I think, is kind of almost an umbrella goal that really looks at everything we do, especially on the instructional side. And so what we really want to do on this end is to develop and strengthen the curriculum mapping process in the district, K to 12. And while we're doing that curriculum mapping, to make sure that we're including instructional strategies and curriculum pieces that really support the skills and abilities I just talked about that are in our strategic plan. These skills and abilities are also very evident in next-generation standards that we're being asked to implement as well. Also, to develop and strengthen an assessment system in the district that not only assesses benchmark schools, but also starts looking at these skills and abilities that are laid out in the strategic plan. The equity goal, we have, you'll notice that these, all these goals from the board are very clever and that they're all kind of intertwined in lots of different ways, so this is intertwined in the excellence goal. But while we're doing this curriculum mapping work, in this curriculum development work, we want to make sure that our curriculum, as it's mapped and developed, reflects and celebrates the diversity of the district. We had, we had about eight elementary teachers this summer, and we had, I want to say, six high school teachers and a couple from the middle school attend different curriculum development sessions at BOSSE's this summer. Dutchess BOSSE's has a center for social justice and equity, and they have some curriculum kind of overview pieces that a good number of our teachers participated in this summer. We want to use them, and we want to not just wait for next summer, but we want to be working on this curriculum work this entire school year. Also, to develop a professional development plan that supports the equity goal for all of our staff, teachers, administrators, support staff, and also supports the curriculum work too. Fiscal goal is, I'll talk about this in a bit, but to develop and communicate a capital project plan. We've done the first part of development, and now we're gonna ramp up and do a much more of a communication plan around that, but that's very tied into the fiscal goal of the district and also to implement your own budgeting process. I think what creates even more importance around your own budgeting is just the federal money that we're also managing during this time. Communication goal, our goal here is to develop a strategic communications plan, is focused on predictable and useful communications that informs the community and also celebrates the work of students and staff in the district. So with this, from at least my office, what we want to do is make sure my superintendent update comes out every week, and then also have a monthly newsletter that is more on the side of the celebrating and informing some of the special things that we do in the district, either students or staff. And also, back to my superintendent update, also having like key, important dates featured on so people can have one more reminder about when things are happening in the district. Culture of Care goal is a couple of things. One is to continue and strengthen the implementation of restorative practices in the district and also to develop a social-emotional action plan from the, from the social-emotional inventory that we did last spring. So a couple of things about that, we had about close to 500 people fill out the survey, and our partners through Dutchess BOSSE's and Ed Elements helped us also interview staff as another data point for the inventory. What we thought the best way of getting all of that information out to the community is to do a Zoom Town Hall a couple of weeks into September to just go over all the data and to talk about some of our initial action steps as a district. So one that came, we already did a session with our administrative team in a retreat last week, and we made just some, I think, important decisions, but that also need a lot of work to follow through on. One is that we really need to have alignment from pre-K to 12 in both definitions for social-emotional learning and also then make some decisions on programming. Is there some social-emotional curriculums that are big investments for a district? We want to make sure that we take time this school year to study them before we make a large commitment. We also want to take stock of the things we already do well, like the responsive classroom effort at the elementary level and the restorative practices efforts at the secondary level, and find ways to grow those. I think on a larger extent, one of the takeaways from the data, these came more from the individual comments from the survey that were highlighted, was just really, really focusing just on a really basic and incredibly important thing, and that's really developing an inclusive, welcoming school district across all six of our schools for everyone. And so some of this work starts immediately, obviously, some of it's just building on good work we're already doing. One of the things, Don Candello has headed this up with our social workers at the elementary level, at the elementary level, we ended last year, we still had about 15% of our elementary students, 15 to 20%, still on full remote instruction. So this upcoming week and next week, social workers at each building are gonna be reaching out to families that were fully remote last year just to talk them through this transition process to coming back to full in-person learning, and also just find ways that we can support them in this change that they're gonna be undertaking. So that's one sort of immediate stuff that we're doing, but there's gonna be a lot more that we'll talk about at the town hall. And we thought that could be a way also with the way we set up the town halls, that we can do a lot of Q and A and get feedback from folks as well. And then we have the sustainability goal. With this one, just two immediate major actions come, and there'll be more that come as this year develops, but one is just to go back to our capital project plan and to make sure we both communicate it well and that it uses resources wisely. And then also to work with where we became members of another center at Dutchess BOSSE's this past year, they have a center for sustainability, and we're, I think, about half the districts in Dutchess are members of it, and to target our teachers and working with some of the curriculum efforts to start piloting sustainable curriculum development and ways to integrate it across our curriculum. So just in terms of some next steps, I already talked about some of these. One is to do a Zoom Town Hall on the results from the social-emotional inventory, share some of our initial planning thoughts, and also answer questions from the community. I won't be doing that exclusively. The person that we worked with this through, Dutchess BOSSE's and Ed Elements, Gabby Hewitt, will be leading a good part of that Zoom Town Hall as well. I think that's good, so people can hear a different voice than just mine on the Zoom all the time. And then the other, these are just a few immediate next steps. Our newest Assistant Superintendent, Segari Arudhindo O'Neil, will be heading up a professional development committee and the curriculum committee, in which the excellence goal and the equity goal will really be moved forward with a lot of the work from those committees. So, sorry, one more thing. Just to switch gears, do we want, Meredith, do you want to just pause on the goals for a second before we talk capital project?
Yeah, why don't we just see if there's any, are there any questions for anyone around the goals?
So, like I said at the beginning, we, you know, we've had a lot of transitions, I didn't say this, but we've had a lot of transitions at the administrative level this summer. Because of the timing of when some folks left, we've just had some people start in the last few weeks with us, which I don't think has put us behind, but some of the really kind of concrete actions that we'd like to share, we need a few more weeks to develop those. And we also honestly want to make sure we develop them with stakeholders too. And so what we'd like to do is come back on September 27th with, with a more detailed plan for moving the goals forward, and members of my team will be heading up parts of those instead of just me talking through the work as well. But what I'd like to recommend, I guess, from my vantage point, is that I think these six board goals are really powerful. We've lined up a lot of work in connection with them. We spent a good part of the day as an administrative team last week, really focused on the board of district goals. So I would like to recommend that we keep using these goals, but I know that we can always tweak or revise too.
So, and just to review these goals, we, this board did not have goals until Anthony White became president, and, and every year, we have, we've renewed them, and sometimes we've changed them or added, and we'll do that at the September 27th meeting. And I think that they have been really helpful. I mean, it was great having them as we got a new superintendent because it really gave him guidance, you know, what we were thinking, what our priorities were, and, but I think it is good to, you know, look at them, look at what we've done with them already and where we want to go with them annually, so.
And I also know, just to frame this a little bit more, the board and myself are doing like an executive retreat on Wednesday, in which we'll be talking about linking these goals to my evaluation process. So, so some of that conversation can be on Wednesday, some is certainly perfect for now.
Are there any questions for Matt? Matt, can you just back up a tiny bit about Ed Elements and talk a little bit more about the work, the schoolwork you have planned with them now, and, you know, if that might change, or?
We joined the Center for Equity and Social Justice for BOSSE's. Again, I think, I think it's about six or seven districts in Dutchess that join both of the centers. What it provides is it provides our teachers and our district access to certain professional development and also consultant work, either BOSSE's consultants or through an organization like Ed Elements. So just to talk about the fiscal part of it, again, it's really useful to do this work through BOSSE's because we receive a significant amount of BOSSE's aid and the money we spent the next year or so. We had an initial conversation with Ed Elements about them doing the social-emotional inventory. They've also helped the team at Sargent and the team at Roundabout do the latest round of step planning or improvement planning for the state, and we've, we've really had a lot of great conversations, and they've been really good at that work. So we haven't finalized anything, but we have been in some talks about them supporting from kind of a more macro level, some of the curriculum work, possibly doing like a curriculum review from an equity standpoint and other things. So I've seen, and, you know, we'll be more public with it when we do the town hall in a couple of weeks, they do, they do really good work. They're very tailored to individual districts, they're not sort of forcing their vision on everyone, and they also help us stay on task quite a bit too, which is nice. So we, if we develop other strategies besides the one that we're currently involved with with them, then we'll update the board and run that plan past everyone. I wanted to wait to talk about that until we did the Zoom Town Hall, so, in which we would record, you wouldn't have to be on it live, but I'd like people to see that work. And when Brian and, when Brian Silchus and Brian Archer come back to talk about their step planning, they can also talk more about how Ed Elements has helped them with this latest planning this year too.
Thanks.
I know last year, Eric started to work with Dr. Javon Hunter with the Culture of Relativity Pedagogy. Is that gonna continue with that Culture of Care and Equity piece goal? Like, is that, are we looking to carry that forward, or did he complete the work that he was doing with the district?
No, we, we actually, it was on pause for a good part of last year for a variety of reasons. Last year was a challenge with sort of launching projects, I think, just with all the other things we were managing with COVID. But we actually had some teachers attend Javon Hunter sessions this summer through BOSSE's, and then we want to work with him with targeting some teachers at the secondary level to work with. The name of the other consultant that BOSSE's used escapes me right now, but she was a little bit more targeted to elementary teachers. When we talk on the 27th, we can talk about her some more. One of the things that's come out of this work is the high school has an elective from the social science department focused on social justice, but we also, Javon also helps teachers just take a part of their class and, and do more sort of inquiry-based projects that the students really help lead. And so we see this year as a year to really get it moving.
Any other questions regarding the board goals? Okay. Do you, oh, do you want to talk about the capital project now, or?
No.
Sorry.
Sorry. Okay.
We, I mean, we can, if you prefer to present it during your business.
All right. That was just a tiny bit embarrassing. So usually, usually when I start walking back to my seat, the conversation gets going, and I don't have that really long silent pause. Okay, so for a while now, we have been, we have been working on developing a capital project. And so the reason we have... When we talk on the 27th, we can talk about her some more. One of the things that's come out of this work is the high school has an elective from the social science department focused on social justice. But we also, Javon also helps teachers just take a part of their class and, and do more sort of inquiry-based projects that the students really help lead. And so we see this year as a year to really get it moving.
Any other questions regarding the board goals? Okay. Do you, oh, do you want to talk about the capital project now or? Sorry. We, I mean, we can, if you prefer to present it during your business.
All right, that was just a tiny bit embarrassing. So usually, usually when I start walking back to my seat, the conversation gets going and I don't have that really long silent pause. Okay, so for a while now, we have been, we have been working on developing a capital project. And so the reason we have is because I always do my very sort of simple way of explaining this, but we have some debt that we've been paying coming off of the books. And it's really important as a district to, to take on more debt. Reasons are pretty straightforward. The state actually gives you aid on debt payments. And it's also really good to make sure you're keeping your buildings functioning and modern with, with this money that the state greatly supports. So it is time, it has been time for us to develop another capital project. So a lot of different things have gone into this. One is we hired a new architecture firm, Tetra Tech. We hired them about a year and a few months ago. And they first did a building condition survey. And then really in 2021, we started talking about developing a capital project in earnest. So what we did last spring is we had each building develop a committee. Teachers around it, administrators, parents. So we have six different building committees. We will get those committees going again in September and October. And then those committees will then kind of meet again if, if it passes. So what we'd like to do, this is, this is not the, where we go deep in detail. We're going to be holding a special board meeting on September 8th. So that is just a week and a couple of days from now, which we will go in great detail about what we are proposing for the project. Bill Wispower will be here live in person with us. So he'll be able to walk through a lot of the things that we're thinking. It is Amory at 26 million. So it's a $26 million project. But even with that size, it's a project tailored to not raise taxes, to keep, we had a goal of keeping it tax neutral and we are achieving that. So there's a number of things that we will be addressing in this project. One of my goals, the reason why we have these six school committees is we really wanted to touch each school in a meaningful way. And so just to quickly go through the schools and what we're thinking and what we'll propose next week. At the high school, we want to redo and modernize the television studio. We also want to modernize and renovate some science classrooms. At Rambo Middle School, we want to renovate, modernize two art classrooms and renovate, modernize two science classrooms. At Sargent, we want to relocate the library and completely just build a really beautiful, I keep using the word modern, but a really beautiful and up-to-date library media center. At South Avenue, we're taking a look at behind the school and just doing a complete overhaul of the play area and making it something that is a difficult space to make the best of. And we want to create just something fantastic back there that the kids are excited to be out every single day to have PE or recess. Forestal, it's, it's a little bit, not as quite at a large scale as South Avenue, but we want to do a lot of work on both the upper and lower playground and also find a creative way to kind of lengthen going down that hill that separates them. Glenham has a lot of different things. We have a new entryway vestibule to add to the security at Glenham. Some pretty big changes to the parking lot. And also then some, a lot of individual improvements to classrooms that the teachers were asking for. So those are the kind of the instructional, the things that focus the, the project also looks at HVAC work in some of our buildings, replacing unit ventilators, which we found very important in this era that we're in. Also new boilers in some of our classrooms, excuse me, some of our schools and new roofs on some of our buildings. So it's a wide-ranging project. Really excited to talk more about it. Bill will be here next week to go really in detail. He's our architect. And then, so the board will hopefully adopt this on September 8th. And then by September 8th, I'll have a communication plan. We'll work with our Postes communication support a bit. We'll do a variety of some in-person forums and meetings and also some Zoom forums and meetings. We'll also create a brochure and a, and a very sort of regularly updated part of our website about the vote. And the vote itself, we're planning to have on October 26th. One thing that I think I, we don't have to do this now, but we may need to change a board meeting around because I think we have a board meeting the night before and it might make sense for us to change that just to streamline things a little bit. But I'll talk to the board about that later. But we are excited to talk about this. I think it's been, you know, last year, it's been mentioned was a long year. This year seems complex in a kind of similar, yet different in some ways way. It's going to be exciting to talk about something that I think will really impact every single student in the district. Oh, and I forgot, we also wanted to impact some things that our community uses as well as our students. So we want to renovate the track, which is heavily used by our students and our track team, but also the community. We wanted to do some improvements to the pool. And we also wanted to do some improvements to the weight room fitness area of the high school. So this is a wide-ranging project. It'll touch a lot of people and we're able to keep it tax neutral. So we are excited to talk about it more.
Thank you, Dr. Landau. In past years, we've talked about, I'm not sure what we used to call it. I don't know if it was industrial arts or, or something, but we talked about building capacity to, to teach the students more hands-on skill sets. I know we started the conversation years ago, like maybe woodworking and then it kind of evolved into more other industrial occupations or? Is, is all these improvements only for renovating existing spaced up to code? Or is there any type of improvement to, that will lend itself to added curriculum?
I think that's a great question. I, I think it goes far beyond just updating things to code. You know, the, the television studio is in need of some pretty extensive upgrades. It's underutilized right now because it needs those. It needs those, you know, more up-to-date technology and also just redesign of the space. Previous districts I've been in, the TV studio is one of the most busy places in the high school. It's not here. I don't think it's through any fault of any individual. It's because the, the room is just, the space is lagging way behind the times. So to me, like, that's one example, and I could, I'll go through some others where it's not a code issue. It's a, how do we really invigorate the instruction and get more young people involved in this? Like I said, I've seen some really wonderful things with television and multimedia studios. The English classes collaborated in them and social studies classes collaborated in there to really produce some high-quality projects. The science classrooms, both that, the high school and Rambo, the art classrooms at Rambo, those, we really, you know, teachers are on each of the committees and giving us a lot of impact, a lot of input on how to really kind of modernize and tailor instruction to what they want to do in 20, in the 2020s and beyond. So, so we're really excited about those upgrades. And then I think our other main instructional one is at Sargent. I mean, if we're talking about inside instructional and that, that's taking their media center, which is currently in that lower level, and it's bringing it up into the main entryway and really making it a room that kind of ties together the whole school. And so we want to sort of take everything that's known about like what makes a media center in an elementary school really thrive in this day and age, and we want to put that into that. Forestal and, Forestal and South is really just kind of focused on the outside learning. And, but, but even so, I know that's, you know, a lot of students, it's their favorite time of day. And so both of those players, especially South Avenue, have been lagging really behind the elder elementaries for quite some time. So I think they'll be able to catch up with this. So, so in terms of like, is it going to bring our instruction to another level in those classrooms? I think it will. It doesn't, you know, the first part of your question about is this bringing in a, a new program, like a brand-new, brand-new coursework and a brand-new program? No, it's not. It's taking, you know, what we're, it's taking what we're currently doing and really trying to strengthen it. However, I will say at the high school, the work we're trying to do with science, I may not know all the particulars, I'll try to have more of them obviously in a week. But I know at the, at the, the science, the science department at the high school, they feel they're, it's like they're not able to do quite everything that they want to do with the lab setups as they are right now. So it, it's even impacting like scheduling. And so what we're proposing with that is I think it will really help them grow new coursework in the science department as well. So, so I don't know if that.
How about the existing maker spaces that were built by the librarians? Have you, are we investing in that? That kind of lends itself either in the direction of science or in the direction of trades?
What was the first part?
The maker spaces, are we upgrading those? Are we creating new space for that?
You know, this, this past year, a lot of things kind of, we took a, I don't want to say a step back, but we kind of paused on some things just with, you know, it's like, and, and, you know, to a certain extent, this year I think has a, has a somewhat similar feel. Except the difference with this year is we've been through a year of this. We, we have, I think, a pretty good handle on how to, how to deal with the health and safety part. And so we really want to make sure we're moving forward on some of these other things. So some of the maker space work, I think, in a sense, was on hold a little bit just with us trying to figure out COVID protocols and whether having that space made sense and, and all that. But we want to move forward with it for sure this year.
One last one?
Yeah.
Robotics lab? Robotics lab?
Uh, it's, I mean, it's something that we could always do. It's not something that we're designing a specific space for though.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And, and this is not, you know, your last chance to ask questions about the capital project. Our architect will be here on Wednesday next week. He'll get, you know, he'll have very detailed slides and.
And we have this, all the documents that we've had through the facilities committee that maybe we should share with the entire board at this point that just sort of itemize. I mean, to see, to see the list we started with in terms of needs that needed to happen in the district and that was then prioritized and then, you know, and whittled down to a point where we could take care of these things that really need to be taken care of in terms of the infrastructure of the buildings, but then leave some room for these classrooms and things that, that the kids actually, I mean, of course, everyone benefits from good ventilation, but it's not as fun or exciting, so.
We will, I'll, I'll pull all those documents together and we'll make sure the whole board has them. And then the things, I, I think in a sense, they'll all be public. So we also will include those on the capital website once the board approves the project. But I, I don't know if I've been in justice tonight, but I am incredibly excited about this. I really think this project will have a truly lasting impact on the district and it will impact every school, which I love that part of it too.
I did want to ask, I know specifically at South Avenue, but this may also be the case at other schools. There were elements, for instance, to the playground that were recently put in by the PTA through, you know, fundraising and hard work. And I want to know if the plans will take into account those kinds of elements at the schools?
Um, yeah, I mean, the, there's, there's, there's a couple of parents on the committee for South Avenue. I think one of them was highly involved in the work in the back of the building. It, you know, as we all know, South Avenue has a new principal this year who's, you know, really getting a crash course in everything because he started a week ago. But we, we'll talk with Bill about that. I think, you know, my sense would be if something needs to be moved or put somewhere else, we may have to do that. We, we, we really want, what's that?
It's not just like throwing everything out.
No, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, some of the plantings for sure will stay and I think they're trying to incorporate that. They, one of the goals with that part of it is we really, you know, there's a, if you're familiar with it, there's parts of that backspace that are very difficult for kids to play on because it, there's either no grass or it's just not super hospitable. So we really want to make a space that kids can use year-round and have a lot of fun doing it. And, you know, on a personal level, and I share this with the South Avenue committee, years ago, I did a few capital projects as a principal, but I did one at a school that we did a huge new playground. We actually did two playgrounds at the school. And it was one of the funnest things to be involved with as a principal. And when we re, when we kind of reopened the school with the new playgrounds, like it was just incredible to see the kids' faces and, you know, their reaction to that. And so I think to do that, you know, we typically don't think about playgrounds in a capital project and to be addressing that, like it to me, the, the South Avenue project goes way beyond fundraising, even though I admire the efforts of the South Avenue community to try to improve it. And so I think it's, I, I, I think it's a great step for the board and the community to say we really need to just dramatically improve that play area. And to, like I said, to a lesser extent Forestal, but that, that, you know, some work needs to happen there too. But I, you know, the kid in me, I'm really excited about that part of it because seeing, seeing the kids interact with it the first couple of times is priceless when it's done.
It's really heartening to know that you're taking the, the communities, the school communities' feedback into account. So that's great.
Yeah, that, that part was fun. And Marie, it seems like a long time ago we had those meetings, it was back in the spring. And then, you know, we, we actually see that as not the end of the committees. We, we want to meet with the committees in the month of September just to, I think they're all going to be excited that we're moving forward with everything just about. And so we want to get the committees excited so they really help spread the word and help get the vote out and all of that. But we'll do lots of things to get the vote out.
Anything else? Okay, I think that's it. Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of particular individuals for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining with the Beacon Association of Office Personnel and to seek legal advice from the school attorney?
Anthony, support.
Second.
Anthony, first. Laura, second. Ask your questions. Allen, favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes eight to zero. The board expects to return in half hour for the votes. Thanks for your patience. Review, reviewing the agenda, there are a few changes. 11.03 on the non-instructional personnel item, B2, additional resignation. D2 and 3, additional leaves. F, appointments. One additional, three removed, six and seven corrected salaries. And 11.04, instructional personnel changes are highlighted on the agenda. Are there any specific or specific presentations? Seeing none. Parent groups? Seeing none. Thank you guys for changing the lighting. Matt, do you have any additional comments?
Uh, just, just briefly, we, we have all of our instructional staff back on Wednesday. You know, tradition has it that we all kind of start together. Typically, we would be in here, but we talked for a little while this summer about doing it virtually. We decided that we're going to gather in the gym where we can really spread out. We'll have chairs on the floor and people will sit in the bleachers and, and Meredith will be there to welcome everyone back. And I'm excited to see everyone, we're very excited about this year. And then a week later, September 8th, we have all of our students come back. So it's an exciting time, lots of time to prep in for this year. And we can't wait to get started. That's all I have.
Thank you. Many reports including board comments. Anthony, should we start with you?
Which Anthony, me?
Anthony, it's saying.
Oh, sorry. So the diversity committee haven't met yet, so I don't really have much of a, much of a report. And I still owe Matt and Marie the information from Staples. I just got it, so I just have to type it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to the facilities committee and. And thank you to the facilities committee and administration for all the hard work on the capital plan.
Jasmine? It's not so much a part of the Beacon District, but I know that the Newburgh Armory is opening up their fall classes. It's extended to everyone and all the classes are free. So if you have a vehicle to go over there or if you live in Newburgh, I would suggest signing up for those classes. They're really life-changing for the kids.
Thank you. Melissa?
Can you confirm that our policy meeting is, we're scheduled for the 20th, correct?
I think that's right.
It's not on my calendar, so I didn't know if it had been scheduled. But that was the date that we were considering?
Yes.
Okay, so tentatively, the first meeting for the year of the policy committee will be September 20th, unless we have any changes to that. And other than that, I don't have any other comments.
Anthony?
Curriculum committee hasn't met since the last board meeting. I have not heard of any potential dates for the curriculum committee at this point. I have no board comments.
Thank you. Kristen?
I've covered everything related to the capital project and the very busy schedule we have, moving that forward in the next coming months. Thank you, everyone who worked so hard on it. And it's, it's really exciting. No other comments.
Thank you. Craig?
So I believe we've decided, and I just want to confirm this also with you, Kristen, because the facilities and operations and then the weather and finance can be done the same night, tag team, back-to-back.
Sure. Does it work for everybody?
What's that?
Does it work for everyone else on the table?
I think it does. At least I haven't heard to the contrary.
Anthony said it works for him.
So just to be sure, we were looking at with the fourth Thursday? Fourth Thursday? Okay. I put it with question marks in my electronic book.
I do think we were talking about the third Thursday so that it was, was it the fourth? No, you're right. You're right. I'm sorry.
And by the way, the third Thursday might be a holiday this coming month.
Yeah, it is.
It is. So I think third, fourth Thursday would be the 23rd of September. So, so facilities and operations at seven to be followed by finance. Very good. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Craig. Flora?
So we had decided to do policy and public donations back-to-back again as well, correct?
Yes.
So then that'll be 8:00 PM on the 20th. I also looked at the proposed NISBA resolutions today, and I noticed that Beacon's resolutions aren't in there. And I was a little unclear on the process of us submitting. Was that something that's done through the district office? Is it something that I should have done?
Kelly, do you know, did you submit our, the resolutions that we approved at our board meeting early?
Oh. So, so I guess in previous years on the committee, is it usually the job of the committee chair to submit those?
You know, we have, have we, yeah, we did submit a resolution before. Craig, did you, do you remember if you sent that in yourself or was that, did the district clerk send it in when, when we had, and you were the chair of the PR committee and we did the resolution about the weather?
Oh, that, that went all the way through NISBA, right?
It did, but
But we, we need to pick it up and do something with it because they haven't really picked it up to do anything with it. They approved it and it's just sitting there.
Right. That's not what I was asking, just in terms of our process. I actually, I'm sorry, I didn't, I did not know either. I assumed that the district clerk sent it, but
No, that's okay. So Craig, when you did that one originally, that proposal, did you submit it to NISBA directly as the head of the committee? Do you remember?
I think, I think the best person to ask about that is Anthony, because we have a delegate at a NISBA convention. And I think it goes through the official delegate. But I'm not sure exactly what the process was.
I didn't hear the conversation, Craig.
This is about submitting a resolution for NISBA. And we did that with the weather emergency thing and went through. So what she's asking is, what is the internal process? Who does the submission? How do we do this?
I believe when we came up with those submissions, we had the clerk, Kelly, submit that to NISBA, then NISBA collects them, and then they have a committee that reviews.
Right, but it was done through Kelly. Kelly did the submission.
So, I mean, there is a, in that email, I think there was sort of a
There's a late submission.
A late submission process. So Kelly, would you be able to submit those resolutions?
I can send, I can resend the resolutions to you and the link to the late submission form, just so you have it all at your fingertips.
It's, it's late for this year's.
What's that?
If you're asking like for them to review them at the annual business meeting at the convention, that convention is, that's something I want to go back to for comments is the convention's October 24th.
Yes.
The submissions, I believe, were needed well in advance.
Yes, but there is a late submission process.
Actually, I think it's an amendment to a resolution in this email I'm looking at right now. Is there, we may have missed.
I mean, I, I feel, I think that's, it has to be a resolution that's already on, like in the, in the booklet. But there's also a late submission process and then it would be added at the end of the resolution list and would be discussed at the end of the vote.
Okay.
So it is doable. It's just a different, a slightly different process during the meeting.
Great. Okay, so you'll send that in?
I'll send that to you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, that it wasn't clear.
Yeah, we need to make that clear, I guess. Any other?
Oh, that's it.
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I wanted to remind everyone that the convention is coming and you should email Kelly if you're planning to attend. And is everyone available for the September 8th special meeting?
I can't understand them, sorry.
It's a comment to the, is it, are we okay with this special meeting on September 8th for the capital project?
Is that okay?
Yep.
You can make it, okay. And then the only other thing for me is, I, I had a, I participated in the advocacy, NISBA advocacy call with Sean Patrick Maloney's office on Friday. And we covered, NISBA supplied some talking points. They were very focused on the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act and that it is not fully funded, asking for more federal funding there, restoring the SALT deduction, bolstering the teacher pipeline, which turned into a big conversation about salaries and supporting students in, you know, in earlier years to be interested in becoming a teacher, but also about hiring practices, bridging the digital divide, not just access to broadband, but what is the speed of the broadband, and investment in school infrastructure. And all of them, you know, all the districts, we, we cross over with some Westchester districts. And so it's, it's an interesting, we don't have all of the same concerns, but when it came, when it came down to infrastructure, there was a lot of crossover. Everyone's, you know, dealing with aging buildings. Everyone's dealing with climate change and feeling like their capital projects can barely cover the basics and don't go far enough into sustainable practices. There, I can email everyone the notes from this, from this, but they were pretty interesting. And that's all. New business, we have on the new business discussing the capital project vote, but I do feel that Matt covered what we were going to cover tonight. So does anybody have any further questions about that?
I just wanted to bring up something that wasn't discussed is that we talked about the facilities committee was at the May annual vote to possibly propose a capital project reserve. So that was something that was discussed at the facilities committee meeting that wasn't brought up. And I know that that's something that I advocated for in the past, previous to the advertising of the last one, but it was a little late. So I would like for us as a board to consider setting up a capital reserve. I think it will be important because it's going to make us, with this capital project, it will make us tax-neutral for, I thought we set out to 2040, to 2040. So if we set up a capital reserve, what we, if we needed some improvements or wanted to do a capital project, we could do a self-funded one if we were able to put enough money in that capital reserve. We need, we need public vote approval to set up the reserve. And to take money out, we don't need public approval to put money into the capital reserve. So we needed to set it up. And then if we were to withdraw funds from the capital reserve, we would need public approval. So with an appropriate fund balance and stuff and all the, hopefully we could get some money and build that up. I know that Jason, our financial advisor, was saying that it's typically a 10-year term for that piece. So that's something to keep in mind to, to start discussing so we could get that on the annual budget vote.
Absolutely, yeah. Thanks for bringing that up. Okay, the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any board member would like to have removed from the consent agenda to vote on separately?
11.04a6.
11.04, B6?
E.
E6.
E as in Edward.
Any others? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve 11.01 through 11.16, less 11.04E as in Edward 6? Flora? Is there a second?
Second.
Melissa's second. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight to zero. Can I have a motion to approve 11.04E6? Kristen, is there a second?
Second.
Flora, second. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So I am in favor, so passes seven to zero with one exception. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Anthony, second.
Craig, second by Anthony, saying, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight to zero. Thanks. Have a good night, everyone.